I want to help get people's voices heard. I want to make sure that Peachtree Corners stays amazing. I want to make sure that our technology continues to grow.
You're listening to Peachtree Corners Life, a weekly online radio show sharing ideas, opinions, and news about the city of Peachtree Corners. Now, your host, Rico Figliolini.
Hi, everyone. This is Rico Figliolini, host of Peachtree Corners Life. Appreciate you joining us on this live feed. This is actually the second one I'm doing today. I had Brian Johnson, city manager, on prime lunchtime with the city manager earlier today at noon, because he was on the West Coast. And we're doing a video chat. Technology, I lost him a few times, he came back, but it was a good discussion. We discussed all sorts of things on what's going on with development in the city and out there on the West Coast at the World Mobile Congress that he was at. But today, now, this afternoon, Peachtree Corners, because there's an election coming up November 5th. I had a special guest last week, the incumbent for the city council post five was Lori Christopher with me, and we discussed issues and why she's running for reelection. Today, we have her opponent, Sherlon Mathias Day, who's running for post five also, which is an at-large seat. That means anyone in the city can vote for the seat.
That's correct.
Right. So I'm going to hand it over to you for a few minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be running for the city council seat.
Okay. So I'm Sherlon Mathias Day, and I have a degree in computer science from Georgia Tech. So I end up being a little bit of a non-traditional candidate, because you don't usually get a lot of technology people running for office. I do actually write code, so that's what I do for a living. Yep. And it was kind of a perfect storm of things. So I have one child, and he went off to college. And that kind of opens up a big amount of time that had been taken up with kid things. And my husband and I started volunteering, and I was really looking for ways to give back. And, you know, throughout my career, you know, I've worked at places and I've taken some risks, because I've worked at startups. My husband has worked at startups. But I've never done anything like this. And I really wanted to take that risk, to take that step, because I felt like this was the right time to do it.
Now, you've lived in Peachtree Corners since when?
2002. So we, my husband and I moved to unincorporated Gwinnett in 97, and then we moved into our current home 17 years ago.
And you have a son, I think?
Yes.
Norcross High School grad?
Yes. So he did the IB diploma. He was in the band, so we were...
How old is he now?
He's going to be 21 in December.
Okay.
So he's a junior.
So I can brag a little bit. My daughter, she's going to like make eyes at me, but, or roll those eyes. She's doing the editing behind the camera, but she went to Norcross, the IB program. Very tough program.
It is very tough. It is a, it is a very hard two years that they go through to get that diploma, so.
Is he feeling good about school?
Yeah, I think so.
Is he following a little bit in your footsteps, or what is he doing?
Yes, he is. So the funny thing is, both my husband and I have degrees in computer science. We met at Georgia Tech in computer science classes. He jokes that he dated the girl, because when we were...
How many coding girls were there?
Not too many back then. Back then, there weren't too many. The ratio was a little worse at tech. I think it's almost 50/50 now.
Oh, wow.
But my son's been coding since middle school, at least.
Really?
So he, yeah, so he's been, he's been programming extensive. So this was, this was his decision. We didn't push him into this, but I mean, I'm happy if he enjoys it.
Yeah, totally. It's a field that lots of kids are getting into, even if they're just doing WordPress websites. I mean, it's just, and that's not really programming in the same sense, I'm sure. All right, so you have some roots here in the community? Which, what, do you belong to any organizations locally?
Sure. So I've done different, different volunteering on and off. So over in the neighborhood I live in, so I'm in Peachtree Station, but I'm in a, I'm in the, like, the Stilson Circle part.
Okay.
So we've kind of, in the past, run our own thing over there, and so I've definitely been involved with that.
Okay.
And I, you know, a shout out to Stilson Circle, because it is fabulous.
Peachtree Station is very big.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, you know, you, so your kids are off at school. You're still working, or?
Yes, so I work full-time. I'm, you know, kind of here, I work in Peachtree Corners.
One of the few people.
Well, that is by design. So I used to work down by Georgia Tech, and I commuted there for 11 years, and that is hard, to commute.
Sure.
And so...
Were you taking motor?
No, no. I wasn't. Because I had, you know, I would have to go pick my kid up and stuff, because he was in daycare then. But I actually worked at Chick-fil-A by Serf.
Okay.
And in this building.
Right? We were talking about that before, which, which, I'm sorry, segue a little bit, Atlanta Tech Park in Technology Park, Atlanta, and this is where the podcast studio is. You know, just want to give a shout out to them for letting us, for being sponsors, letting us use this podcast place, which was owned by Five Serv, and I think you told me it was owned by Netflix later after that, for Ozark.
Yeah, so they filmed, my understanding is, they filmed part of season two of Ozarks here. But, but yeah, so I worked at Chick-fil-A by Serf, and I've been in, I think, almost all the buildings they had here. Well, maybe not, because they have a lot of buildings. But I was at the Forum, I was on the big campus.
Okay.
And then we were in this building.
The big campus on East Jones Bridge Road. So, so, I mean, so now that you have, not spare time, I guess. Well, could be. Right? Cadence College, so you don't have to, you're not dealing with children and after-school activities and stuff. But you're doing a run for city council.
I am.
And tell me, you know, why you feel you want to do this run?
So I really want to give back to the community. Because of my technology background, I really feel like I can interface very well with what's going on with Curiosity Lab and the changes that are happening in the city. We've been here for 17 years. I'm really seeing a, an explosion of technology here, and I want to make sure that we, we keep that momentum going. It's so important for the people that live here, so many people that live here are in technology, and having jobs open up so that they can work in Peachtree Corners instead of having to commute is so important.
So I guess one of the questions I wanted to ask, so we understand, so I understand why you want to run, but one of the questions, or several questions actually, has to deal with the city. Were you in favor of the city becoming a city, or Peachtree Corners, I should say, becoming a city?
So I actually voted no for the city. So the, the city vote happened in 2011, I think, and then it became, or 2012.
Somewhere around there, I forget which.
So at the...
It's seven years old.
Yeah, it's seven years old. At that moment of time, when the, the vote happened, things were really good in the area of Peachtree Corners that I lived. And I think that was one of the challenges with trying to incorporate into the city, especially my particular neighborhood was very close-knit, it's still very close-knit. And there were a lot of concerns from a lot of people, when you bring in this other level of government, what might change? When things are already good, you worry, change, change might make things worse, or why do we need this other level of government? Because we weren't getting bad service per se from Gwinnett County. So, and I have talked to so many people during this campaign where they also voted no. And, and not unanimously, but, but a very, very large number of people that I have spoken to that voted no have said, but I'm very happy with the way the city has gone, and I'm happy with the things that they've done, and, you know, it, I think overwhelmingly, people feel like there hasn't been a lot of overreach, they've kept the military zero. So there's a lot of things that have, have made people happy, and a lot of people have changed their mind.
What would you point to that the city has done well?
Oh, tech, the, the tech park for sure is, is fabulous for me. I, I'm also very, very happy with the town center, for us having a place where we can gather, and we can have concerts, just like so many of our neighboring cities have this kind of venues. It's, it's really important to us to have space like that, too.
Were you, are you okay with the way city, the city has handled, because there's been some discussions sometimes from different factions and stuff, as far as how the city has used money for purchases? For example, with the town center was one, with the Simpsonwood Park purchase, or, well, we gave some money, the Gwinnett County purchased it, but we did provide some money for, to complete the purchase.
Yes. I mean, overall, I think the city has been responsible with the money that they are kind of charged to handle. I know that early on, that first bridge was a little elaborate, and I think that that's colored a lot of people's opinion, like, because it was a little too elaborate, perhaps, for...
Well, sure, the original, the original...
With the spires and...
Yeah, yes, which was, which was the furthest out of the designs, but, yes.
And so, you know, the, the new bridge that's being built right now is more of a Honda than a, like, an Italian sports car bridges. So, you know, they've, they've got some, you know, very fiscally responsible things that they put in.
So would you say the city, or the city has listened to the community to, to agree?
Um, yes and no. I, I think it depends on the topic. The bridge, for sure, is a point of contention, and there's, there's pro-bridge people, and there were a lot of anti-bridge people. I do feel like they did listen that the original design was too elaborate, and then they came back with a more sensible design. I know the hotel and apartments on Peachtree Corner Circle, maybe some people feel like that, that wasn't something that they would listen to. I know there was a big push against that, and we'll see what happens with the intersection improvement that's happening at East Jones Bridge and Medlock Bridge. So that's the big, the next big one.
Right.
A lot of people are concerned about the Michigan U.
Yeah, there's, there's, and I've been on a Michigan U in Detroit, so I can see how that feels, and it's not a bad thing, it's just people have to get used to. When you first see it, it's a strange animal, but once you get used to it, it doesn't seem so bad. And the apartment, you know, the apartment, seven-story apartment complex that was part of that development deal to get the town center, because originally it was zoned, that whole land was zoned, four apartments to begin with, for almost 300 apartments.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it was double the apartments that they actually can do now. And so there was a trade-off, obviously.
Yeah.
And, you know, at this point with the apartment, do you think they handled that well as far as, because the Indigo Hotel and the apartment complex have to be built hand-in-hand.
Yeah, so I, I believe the hotel has to go in first. I think that that's...
Yes, because of the way they did that, yes.
Having that hotel there is going to be really, really important for, for our community, having that closer hotel, having, you know, the business travelers come in and go into the town center and go into the Forum, which, you know, we want to make sure that both of those places stay, stay healthy and have lots of traffic come through them.
What do you think about the entertainment over life that...
The entertainment district?
Right, that they placed in that area.
I like it. So one of the things that I would like to see, and I, I don't believe to date we've done this, is to have an entertainment district-wide event. So there's been a lot of things at the town center, but there hasn't been something where there was like maybe an arts festival or something where there were things set up in all three of the locations, because the entertainment district is the, the town center, the town green, the Forum, and the Noble Finn Shopping Center. So those, those three are the...
Actually, I believe the other side where CVS is in Ingalls, I think that's part of that, that district.
I don't, I don't know that it goes all the way to Ingalls, but...
Okay. I have to check that, but that's what I had thought.
Yeah, and so, but see, that's one of the things. It would be really nice to have an event where it's like, this is the entertainment district, this is where it is, these are the rules. So with the entertainment district, and we know from the concerts, you can bring coolers, but I don't think you can just, like, crack open beer in the parking lot of the Forum, because that's not how that works.
Correct.
And so you could buy a cup from a restaurant and then walk around with it. And so I think there's some confusion from citizens, because it's like, what can you bring, what can't you bring, when can you do it? And then for the restaurants, too, there's been some...
I mean, the rules are fairly clear, you just have to read the rules, and maybe I need to put that in a bullet point online on the website, because the, the rules are fairly, it's about 12, 13, I forget how many pages, but it's fairly detailed about when you can, when you can't, if it's a concert, if it's a, you know...
Yeah, and so, but having an event where it's like, this is what it is, everyone, we're going to be in the entertainment district, but that's just a thought.
Do you think it's okay to, you know, I know some people have for and against it, it's obviously a concert area, but you think a, a bar, or, not a bar, a concert venue would be a good idea? Like Earth Fair has been talked about as a possible concert venue, although it's too small, probably, but...
Uh, yeah, and I think it's going to be a Lidl.
And right now, it's a Lidl, is it? Little, L, is that how you pronounce it?
L, I don't know, it's...
L-I-D-L?
Yeah.
L-I-D-L, yes. It's like another...
Aldi.
Aldis, right. In fact, I think it's the same familial people that broke up a company from a while ago.
Um, no, I, I think, so that's, that next phase of the town center, which is the kind of wooded area that hasn't been developed yet, there's, there's a lot of thoughts on what might go in there. And one of them is an art center, which sounds like it would be nice. I think we need to get a lot of feedback from the citizens to understand what use people would see the most value. And I, I think there might be some partnerships, so if there was an art center, it wouldn't be something necessarily the city was paying for completely. We would, we would have partnerships to help pay for that, so...
And there's an arts, arts council.
There is an arts council.
And I think there's an authority, or they have the ability to create, because they're an authority, they have the ability to raise money or something like that.
Yeah, and they did just, there was just an event maybe a month ago, that 20s event at the Town Green, and that was to raise money for art for the roundabout.
Oh, okay.
So that was a fundraiser.
Cool. So there you go, part of that. You talked about increased transparency, increased communications, data behind the decisions, hosting more town halls and listening sessions.
Yes. So one of the things that a lot of people have asked me is, you know, why, why was this decision made, or why was that decision made? If you get on Nextdoor, you can see a lot of complaints about the city doing certain things, and it's because people don't understand why those decisions were made. So one of the big things I would like to see is, there's, there's two city council meetings a month. One is the, the formal meeting where they vote, and then the, that's the last...
The fourth Tuesday.
The fourth Tuesday. But the second Tuesday is the working session, which, if citizens want to come in, get involved, that's the one to go to, because that's the more informative meeting. So presentations are done, that's where most of the discussions happen. So if you go to the, to the formal council meeting, people will go, well, there wasn't a lot of discussion, and we don't understand why they're voting, but it's, it's because those discussions had happened in a prior meeting.
Which are public meetings, by the way.
They are.
So anyone, anyone can go to those meetings?
Anyone can go to them, but they're currently not recorded. And that's the thing that I think would be beneficial to our citizens.
Recorded, like, video recording, or?
Yes. So, you know, just like this, you know, if we could livestream them, and then record them, and then put them up online, because there's a lot of really great, a lot of really great discussions that happen. Not everything that people are discussing, you know, there's a lot of business-as-usual stuff, and those meetings can be quite long.
Right.
But to have it where you could go in and actually see what's happening, and as somebody that, you know, was a full-time working parent, going and sitting in, in that room on a Tuesday evening, potentially the last working session, some of the working sessions can be quite long, and the last one, we didn't get home till 11:30.
I'm not surprised. This is why they broke them up, because originally it was...
They were too long.
Right. I mean, when they were council meetings.
Yeah.
Because then they did the work and the council stuff at the same time.
And so, you know, I think that if you've got little kids, if you work, if you work offset hours, it's not always possible to be in that room at that moment to see those discussions.
So you'd like to see an online stream of, of the...
Yeah, and then a recording, and you could go back and watch it. I think that that would really help, and, you know, and to, to break it up by topic. So if you look at the agenda and you're really only interested in, you know, one thing, you can go straight to that one thing and look at it.
I think Brian Johnson and I have talked about timestamping video streams and stuff, because it's just easier to go 20 minutes in, an hour and 10 minutes in, than to watch the whole three hours of a city council meeting.
That's it. And, and, you know, they're, they can be long.
Yeah, and for sure. I mean, they're, and there's reasons for that, you know, right? You want to have full discussions of the issues, you want to know what's going on and stuff, so...
And, and some of the agendas are packed.
Yes.
They go through a lot, a lot of stuff.
Yeah. Even for a city, a light city, there's still a lot of things that you have to do.
Yes.
Some of the other stuff you talked about on your website, going through some of those issues, or citizen commitment, we're talking about maintaining a zero military, which it's already a zero military.
Right, yeah.
Increased walkability in Peachtree Corners, increased attention to the south side of the city. Which one of those three do you want to, do you want to hit on first?
Why don't, so I'll just briefly say, having a zero military is, is very important, unless something drastic happened. I can't imagine that that would be something that the city would want to change.
Yeah, I don't see that either. They're doing a good job there. What do you think about, and the walkability, to me, I mean, I forget how many miles of pathway and...
Yeah, the multuse trail, yeah. So one of the things, so I did create a group where we actually are focused on walkability in Peachtree Corners, but it's really in areas where people might not have cars. It's called a Walk in My Neighbor Shoes, and we actually go out and we walk those places where you might have a lot of people that walking is their only option. And I've partnered with some of our citizens that are very civically engaged, they live in apartments down there, and, you know, we've taken a little break because of the election, but we're going to start back up as soon as the election's over. And they're actually the ones that are driving where we go walk, because it needs to be people that are experiencing it.
For sure.
People that have said, you know, this area doesn't have streetlights, there's no sidewalks, and there's a big population of people that walk. And so we're going to be exploring that, and whenever we do that, I'll, I'll write up a little something, and I'll give it to Brian Johnson. He gets like a little book report from me, like, this was...
This is what it's about. What about, they talk about walkability, I mean, we have the bridge that's being put up here, and I think by late January or something, they're going to close the roads, is what Brian told me, for just two days, 48 hours, to be able to put the bridge, because it's coming in like one piece, and they're going to sit it right, right there. But they're also, and part of the original plan was that there'd be another bridge down by Chick-fil-A, that area.
Yeah, the Aldis and Publix.
Right.
I think that that, you know, I think this bridge is going to be good. When we've had the concerts, I've been just amazed at the number of people that have walked to those events, both West Jones Bridge and East Jones Bridge. I do think that the bridge is going to get used, but I would have, my preference is that first bridge, I would have liked to have seen go down by the Aldi and Publix, where you've got a lot of people that are walking to go get groceries and kind of using it year-round.
So you're in favor of the bridge down there, though?
I am, I would, yes. I think it would do a lot of good, I think it would help a lot of people with just kind of daily activities.
Any other attention to the south side of the city that you think that the...
Sure. You know, once the, the town center is, is done, and we've got this next phase, but the Hulken Bridge corridor is, is something that's been on the city's radar, so they've already done a Hulken Bridge corridor study, that was done in 2017. One of the things that's, not just for Peachtree Corners, but all of Gwinnett, is our housing. You know, they're expecting Gwinnett to grow by another half million people in the next 20 years, at which point will be the most populated county in Georgia.
Right.
I've had people reach out to me, they live here in Peachtree Corners, they, they're currently renting, they want to buy their first house, and there's just not a lot of things that are starter homes available. So, you know, I want to make sure, as we look to the future, that we have like a nice spectrum of housing prices. You know, people like to talk about affordable housing, but what we need is a spectrum of housing prices. A lot of the new development that's come in have been 400-plus. There's new townhomes that are going to potentially go down in Mechanicsville, but those are going to be like 300. And so, you know, we need to make sure we have some starter homes, too, so that...
So how would you do that? Let's dig it just a little bit into the weeds, because it's easy to say that.
Yes.
But how do you do that? How do you incentivize development to be able to do that?
Sure. So we have to make sure that we can allow the density that's going to make it, at the end of the day, all of this has to be profitable for the developer that's coming in.
Right.
And so we need to make sure that they can put the density in that they need to make it profitable. And for certain developments, the city could give them incentives to come in and, and put in a, a development at a price point that would make it more affordable for some of our citizens.
So trade-off a little bit density for a little bit lower pricing?
That's right.
Okay. Getting into development a little bit more, there's the East Jones Bridge Old Five Serv property development that just, I think it's Providence Group, that just bought that land from the original buyers who got it rezoned, who are now partners in that development, and that's a 55-plus.
Yes.
Age-restricted.
And then, and then it moves into the assisted living, so it's that graduated development.
Correct, over a period of time, though.
Yeah.
Right? Over a period of time, there's memory care, I think that's sort of the last edge. From my discussions, I mean, it's rezoned that way, but doesn't have, that last bit of it doesn't have to happen, depending on the economics of it, right?
Yeah, they're going to build it in phases.
Yeah. So in fact, they're starting the first phase, and they're going to be selling the first houses in 2020, or the fourth quarter of the, of 2020. So they're breaking ground, sort of, the first part of next year. But do you feel that, you know, we're talking about, I think it was about 900-plus units. Do you feel that's a good use of that land? Brought it up against Chattahoochee River.
I think it is. So I worked there, when I worked at Fiserv.
Right.
I was on the campus for a while. I know some people are concerned about the density of housing, but we have to remember when that was Chick-fil-A and that was Fiserv, there was, I think, about 2,000 people that worked there. And so that road actually used to accommodate that traffic, and then people would come in kind of in the morning and at night, and so they really contributed to the rush hour. And you would expect with it being a residential community, especially 55 and older, you're going to have a lot more variation in the traffic pattern. So I don't think it's going to necessarily be, it's going to be more traffic, but it used to be worse when it was Chick-fil-A.
So a little bit swap out of density of traffic?
Um, you know, we've got a lot of, you know, the choices, is it going to be residential, or are we going to try to bring a big company in? Um, I, you know, I, I don't know that we need another shopping center, I don't know that that would have made sense. Um, so really, those are your two big trade-offs.
Um, well, especially because it's smack in the middle of residential.
Yeah, and, and doing residential there makes a lot of sense. Having it be fifty-five and older means that those houses, some of the people that haven't aged out of the school tax will pay into our schools, but they're, but they're not gonna have school-aged children, so that's good for um our cluster.
Right.
Um, so no, I think that that's a great use and, and focusing on bringing our technology uh to here and to our empty office parks is the right thing for us to do.
Yeah, there's less vacancy now because of, of the way things are going. Um, the, you know, when we're talking about development and stuff, we're talking about lower pricing, lower-priced housing. Now, the city is made up of probably, I forget the percentage, but it's nearly half, I think, uh, multi-use, not multi-use. Um, uh, apartment complex, right? So, and a lot of them are aging out to a certain point.
Yeah.
Uh, they're twenty, thirty, forty years old. Uh, some out-of-state REITs, real, real estate investment trusts have bought these. They don't care because they're fully occupied for the most part.
They do have a lot of occupancy.
Right, so there, there's a lot on Hulken Bridge, Jimmy Carter. How would you look at development in that area? I mean, you have a place like by Jimmy Carter and um Peachtree Industrial Boulevard, the big shopping center that used to have LA Fitness in there. Then they came on this side, if you will, onto Peachtree Parkway. What do you, would, would you want to do there? Well, how would you want to work there?
So when we talk about the aging apartments, um, certainly, you know, one of the things that we have to remember is the city doesn't own that property, so we can try to incentivize um work being done on those apartments, but one of my big concerns is, you know, the reason those apartments are they're like ninety-seven percent occupied, they're very, very full, is because people need a place to live at that particular price point. And so we have to be cautious if we're talking about uh knocking those down, you know. But that's the, the discussion, that we don't displace people that might not then be able to live uh in Peachtree Corners, that it becomes unattainable. So that's certainly something I'm concerned about, and those are things that the city can do to incentivize. But it's, it's going to be a challenge when they're making money and they don't have to do a lot.
Right.
I mean, we see that with the Gwinnett Place Mall, which luckily is up for sale.
Yes.
I mean, that has.
Actually legitimately up for sale, it's been up for sale for a long time, but now it's legitimately up.
I mean, it's been an eyesore for Gwinnett for at least ten years. Um, it's really been underoccupied and it's been very, very difficult for the county to get anything done there, because if the people that own it don't wanna do something, then.
It's a write-off for them. Half that mall is, I mean, that's where the walk-in debt, I think, the inside.
The strange thing.
Stranger Things was yesterday.
Yeah, Stranger Things.
Yeah, it's another Netflix original. Um, so, you know, to, just to piggyback a little bit on that. Are you, would you be in favor of density, higher density, seven, seven-story? Cause right now, I mean, in certain parts of Peachtree Corners, and people may not realize this, along with, along Peachtree Parkway. You can build with a special use permit, a seven-story mid-rise building, almost any stretch of Peachtree Parkway going south.
Um, so this is my personal thoughts on it. Um, you know, when you go down into Brookhaven and then you see these large um multi-tenant buildings and they kind of line both sides of Peachtree Industrial down there. Uh, I really wouldn't be happy seeing that uh on Peachtree Parkway or, or maybe even Peachtree Industrial. Um.
But would that work on Jimmy Carter and Hulken Bridge?
Maybe. Um, not lining it and traffic's a problem. I mean, everybody knows traffic's a problem.
Yeah, for sure.
And so as we start adding density, we need to have a solid plan for how we're gonna manage the additional people. Um, and this is a, a regional problem, it's a problem throughout Gwinnett County. And the, I've talked with a lot of people who would like to see no additional development. But the problem is, we're going to get hit. Um, there is a, a, a saying when you talk about uh development, is if you don't allow that development to happen in your city. It's gonna happen in the next city and you're still gonna be impacted. That house is still gonna be built, just on the, on the other side of you. Uh, and so that's what we're seeing, we're seeing Johns Creek and we're seeing Swanee, they're really um doing a lot of development and we are going to be impacted by their traffic.
And development that actually grows the city, and, and those cities are growing in a good way, it's not like they're growing in a bad way.
No, they're not growing in bad ways.
Yeah, the um, just to, and, and by the way, there's empty lots along Jimmy Carter and Holcomb too, or even office buildings that essentially because of the way they're zoned, some of these places, can have more units built there.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, and you know, it, it, depending on what happens uh with, with uh Gwinnett County. Uh, you know, one of the things that they, they wanted was to put a transit hub potentially down there on Hulken Bridge, which would be uh, which would be very good uh in terms of being a catalyst for development.
So I was gonna ask you that too, that's segueing a little bit, we were talking, you mentioned transportation and stuff and traffic. Mota, would you be in favor of that coming into Gwinnett County?
Uh, yeah, so I, I actually did uh some volunteering and canvassing for the, the Mota Initiative. Uh, I know a lot of people are upset uh about the Mota piece of it. And part of the transit plan was to bring the heavy rail in, and by, by law in Georgia. Uh, Mota is the only supplier of, of heavy rail. So, um, it was, if you want heavy rail, Mota has to be involved. Um, I, I struggle with, uh, whenever I go to the Dorville Station and then I have to go into the city. I'm amazed at how fast it is. Um, versus how long it would take me if I was actually in my car. Um, so to have a, a closer transit station would be great. But I don't know from here that the transit station that they're talking about, where the heavy rail would go, would be really any closer than the Dorville Station was.
Right, well, I think that we're talking about eighty-five and Jimmy Carter, taking it up that route.
Yes.
Which makes more sense, I think.
Yeah, to go up, yes.
And then the multi-transportation buses.
So the, uh, the light rail, the bus rapid transit.
Right.
So, um, definitely having bus rapid transit, which would have come out of our, if we had a transit hub. Um.
You think that would have been okay at Ju- at Jimmy Carter and Spalding? Cause that's where they were thinking, I think.
I think they were talking about the old, uh, maybe the old Outback.
Correct.
Yeah, so uh, I think it would be nice there. Um, it would be pretty central to the city, you could park. If you had something that was fast or dedicated laying down to the Dorville Station or to the other station. Um, it would make using Mota a little faster and a little more efficient.
Do you think, um, I had talked about the idea of, if that hub was there of doing multi-use development around that hub?
I, I think that would be a natural thing. It would be a very organic growth that happened when you put in a big transit station like that. Um, naturally developers are gonna wanna come in. Uh, another thing down there that I'm, I'm very in favor of is the Crooked Creek Trail.
Right.
So we took part in the Crooked Creek cleanup this year. I don't know if you've ever been down in there?
No, but Lori Howard sends me pictures.
Lori's, Lori's a friend.
Yeah, she's a good woman.
It's, um. It is, it's so funny, because we met uh in the parking lot by the Popeyes there. So you're, you're right, like you're in Popeyes parking lot.
Right.
And then uh Bob had cut a trail for people, and then you just go back into the woods. And then it's like this amazing, like, it's, it's not waterfalls, but it's this natural and, and you're like, how is this here in the middle of our, of our city? And it's, you know, right behind the Popeyes and you don't even know that it's here.
Yeah.
Um, and so to build out, uh, and the, the city has approved the feasibility study. And then it'll tie into uh trail systems that are being planned for, uh, I think Dorville and Sandy Springs. So it's gonna tie into a bigger trail system.
Right.
Uh, and then if we build something like that out where it's, cause right now, it's hard to get back there. Like you need a, a guide.
Uh, for sure, yeah. There's no natural paths going back, there's, yeah.
And having that is gonna bring in uh kind of a, a new um thing to the city that we don't have. It's a new park, it's a new feature, and I think that's gonna bring some organic development too. If that's available, people are gonna wanna build around that.
Cool. Um, we've reached towards the end of our time. Um, but I, I appreciate you coming out to uh, to do this conversation.
Well, I appreciate you doing this, uh, you do a good service to our city.
Thank you. So at the end of this time, I, I guess you should, every politician that comes on with me that I talk to. No, I shouldn't say politician, but individual that have an interest in serving government and serving the people actually through government. I've always asked them to ask for the vote. I come from New York and if you don't ask for the vote, you're not gonna get it, so ask for the vote, tell them why you want them to vote you.
Uh, sure, so um, first of all, uh, I have the website, it's electron.com. Uh, I also have a, a Facebook page, which is the same, Electron. Um, you know, one of the reasons I'd like for your vote is I'm gonna bring a new perspective. Uh, I really want to work to increase our communication. I want to help get people's voices heard. Uh, I wanna make sure that uh Peachtree Corners um stays amazing. I wanna make sure that our technology continues to grow, so uh please consider voting for me. Uh, you can always email me if you have any questions.
Cool, thank you. So I wanna say thank you to everyone for joining us. Uh, as I mentioned, there was the prime lunchtime with uh Brian Johnson as well today, so check that out on our Facebook page. And once you get the podcast, if you're listening to this from iTunes or iHeart, Spotify, just leave a review, especially on iTunes, that helps us. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for listening to Peachtree Corners Life with Rico Figliolini. You can listen to our live stream on Spreaker every Thursday night at eight thirty PM, or on demand at iHeartRadio, Spotify and iTunes. Don't forget to like our Facebook page for notification of our live video streams of the show. Catch our other podcast shows at PeachtreeCornersLife.com.